What? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to try to slide a table over. Maybe you can just sit down here, my bill.
I'm only here shortly, Brandon.
What's that?
I'm just here to recuse myself.
Oh, okay.
It's not because of you.
Well, I was already told.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I figured I'd sit down here to keep you in line.
Yeah. I'm not trying to be too much. Oh, okay. Yeah, because sometimes it turns out I just can't get that back in the actual. You know that.
You have to do those platters every couple of years. But I don't believe them. And I think that it's unfortunate.
I believe in the last.
I don't think it should be a mandate. I think it should because they're only using it because of what I've experienced. Not only on other things. People, people just don't, they don't really. It's more isolating.
We're doing the Perry Lane.
It's actually the most powerful board in town.
It is. They don't understand.
Oh, I understand. Probably say that. Oh, yeah, without. If I take all this.
Other people should take some.
I will. I, I, you know, I always push. Yeah. But the 1087 says that. You will be done. But I want. They, they can't say anything. 10,000 square feet. So it's four houses.
Wasn't that last one?
10,000 square feet for the next. Four houses.
I thought you were talking for the humans. Okay. They allow 10,003.
Right. No, we can't allow anyone. I still think that's a low cost of sale. But the people who said that was a minimum. That is what you're trying to push.
That's the minimum.
I, I don't know. Right. That'd be, no, that'd be the max.
Well, right now, our maximum.
So you sworn in, so you always, it was a board. And you can.
I'm, I'm maxed. It's going to be residential.
You know, I'm saying sure.
Well, you're talking about the difference. The 1087 has all of our residential built.
You gotta be actually a lucky soul.
You're just. You're just, yes. But it's not keen when you're. Most of that is connected. Which is why you tend to. I mean, there's two nice prime reversal rates right now.
You're absolutely.
The only reason why the practice point didn't. Okay, thank you. You don't decide, it's like moving down the stage, you can't ever do it.
Really.
That's bad.
I agree. Still shaking hands afterwards.
Sure.
Hey, Richard. Richard, do you want to sit here? I'm going to recuse myself. You sure?
When it comes up.
Because I'm. For the whole meeting. I'm going to recuse myself for the whole meeting. Might be more comfortable for you.
I think I'm being probably 6:05 by now, I guess. Or I will call to order the April 4th meeting and the planning board here at Wickham Hall. I'll begin with a roll call. Scott Zelsk here. Michael York here. Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Bill Hutwether.
Here.
Steve Malone. And Lily Gallagher.
Here.
Okay, now the agenda for the evening here is, let's see, we have a public meeting, planning board, Perry Lane Site Plan Review Extension. Avenue Development Group has submitted a request for a 12-month extension of their site plan review approval for an 84-unit multifamily residential development on property located at the intersection of West Swansea Road and Perry Lane. Shown at Tax Map 72 Lot 98, and that's located in the Business District. And under applications and public hearings, we have a boundary line adjustment. Michael Gamarlo requests a boundary line adjustment for a transfer of land area between properties owned by Michael J. and Jennifer Gamarlo and Marlowe Incorporated, located at 39 Cobble Hill Road and 765 West Swansea Road, respectively. The subject properties are shown at Tax Map 72 Lot 96 and 98 Ash 1, and are located in the Business District. And in between that, I'm going to schedule the middle school addition, because that was at the end of our meeting, but it's going to get a little bit long after that, so I'm going to put the middle school right there after the boundary line adjustment. And then after that, we'll have a planning board, number 22-008. It's a site plan review application, and we'll be seeing if the application is complete, and if it is, we'll be probably going to public hearing. And John Flatley Company requests a site plan review for a 208-unit multifamily residential development and 5,000-square-foot light industrial flex space building on the property at 244 Old Holmes Street Highway, shown at Tax Map 19 Lot 98. The subject property is located in the Industrial Park District. And under discussions and other business, we have master plan updates regarding the Conservation Commission and site plan review regulations, and any other business as may be required. And last but not least, we got to move the tables downstairs up here. That's agenda, that was on agenda. We got to do that. Because we're, they're having a meeting tomorrow morning, they're having a 7 o'clock meeting up here, and we're the last ones to use the equipment down there, so we move it up here. So we have our regional impact motion. That means, is anything on the agenda tonight require us to notify the surrounding towns? Would it affect them? Yes, no? We need a motion for that?
Motion that we do not have anything on the agenda that would require.
Okay. Motion by Michael York, that nothing on the agenda requires us to notify surrounding towns. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? And that's passed. Now, we have minutes from March 20, I mean, March 24th minutes. Does anyone have any comments on those minutes? If not, any changes, comments, additions, deletions? If not, motion to accept them as presented would be in order?
I so.
Okay, motion by Jane to accept the minutes as presented, seconded by.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ever opposed? Okay. Got minutes done. Now, we're going on to Perry Lane Site Plan Review Extension. That's the Avenue Development Corporation. They want to request a 12-month extension of the site plan review approval for the 84 minutes on Lieutenant. And are they here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
For the extension.
Yeah, you're here for the extension, correct?
Correct, yeah. Just requesting that they're being extension granted. Given unusual conditions in the world today with regard to our development project, the pipeline of deals that the state has at this juncture, while it's slow due to the just the way things are, this is very tough out there. So we were expected to close this in March, getting to April, it's now moved to May, and we're kind of beholden to stake this structure with regards to the bonds being issued, so we can't move any faster than financing will allow us to do. And the state has financing that probably will keep close now until sometime in June. We're expecting so, request the extension. Financial obligations still.
All right, things are looking good then, you know, then you're still on track, just going slower than you expected.
Yeah, that's true. We, we, we don't need to start or do the draft at this point. And have that substantial work done, but unfortunately, that is decided by supply chain issues and everybody else's.
See, on your control. So you had requested a six-month extension. We generally grant them for 12 months, so.
If we.
Yeah, okay, so the motion would probably be for that. Okay. Any questions from the board on this extension? Pretty straightforward.
I couldn't really hear why you want the extension, just because construction's slow now?
It's a combination of supply chain issues, and we are waiting for the financing through the state housing finance authority to be completed, and it's in a bond cycle, and that bond has been pushed back numerous times as a result of supply chain issues in the state's decision to move the closing date from March to April, from April to May, and now to May, to most likely June. There are extenuating circumstances outside of our control.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any in the public? And a motion would be in order to grant the extension for 12 months?
I'll make the motion that we grant the, the extension for 12 months.
Okay, motion by Michael York to grant the extension, 12-month extension. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
One other question, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the pitch to move line, we're, we're struggling finding ways to get this project built, as are every other project that is in the pipeline now across the state. As you're well aware, you know, costs are gone up since December, when we had an hour limit for this development. Just from the modular construction side, their prices increased $2 million. Substantial. That's 75% of the budget. We could expect at least another $500,000 to $700,000 in additional cost from destruction pricing increasing. I know that the board had previously put a stipulation on with regard to the move line, and it's been pushed through, but if there's an opportunity through RSA 67460, which is the state statute, regarding workforce housing, which is supposed to clear the workforce housing. And if there are burdens and situations that arise, I think we're probably in one. This move line, at the point when we looked at it back last year, was added, and it was noted about $900,000, $950,000 in insurance expenses. It's, it's doubled that now. It's to a point now where, you know, we're still working as our, the other four bond projects are in this development cycle, to even get to a point where, you know, we may be able to make this work. Thank God the government put $100 million on the table. That looks like it's going to become available, some of that maybe in June, which would, you know, work, work to help ease some of these burdens, but we're in unprecedented times, and I know that the board had indicated that they wanted it pushed through. The reason why we went with a three-story roof was, three-story height was simply because we thought it would fit better in the community. And we could have gone to four stories and down to the platform, I guess, and gotten approved that way, but we just felt that the three-story roof would be better for that area because the buildings in the area were about the same height. But in doing so, you know, we got put on the, with the pitch proof, and, you know, there, there are pair picks we could put up there, other measures we could do, but I don't know what the procedure would be to ask that if the board reconsider this position to make this project economically feasible, but I think everybody here knows that, you know, affordable housing is a, is a must in our state. Now, the basic rates are 12% on the coast, they're low by consensus. And if we work together collectively, I bet we could come up with something, but I don't know what the procedure would be to ask the board to reconsider that for maybe another meeting, or we still have a little bit of time for this finance to close, and we do have a lot of the engineering already completed, as that's what we expected to begin with, but I would ask for the board's advice and assistance in helping us maybe propose that there's a rethink of this, you know, for the greater good of the community, because these issues are definitely going to be made out now, so.
All right, well, yeah, it's no fault of yours that the, the supply chain issue is there, but it's no fault of the planning boards either.
I realize.
You know, that pitch group was very important to most of the members of the board, I think anyways, as well as the public that attended. If, if you wanted to change that and resubmit it, it'd require another public hearing, because it was a condition of the approval, so it would require a public hearing to change that condition, so you're welcome to request that, a public hearing for that change in the site plan if you wish.
Or it would be for that one specific item as requested, or would it be the entire site plan review?
You, you just got an extension to that, so I don't know. This is just my opinion, not the board's opinion, but I would think that it would fall under a modification of the site plan, which we do sometimes, and which isn't a full-blown site plan review, it's modification of the existing site plan, and you would come in for a public hearing for that.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else want to?
Just had one other question. Last meeting, we were talking about the window situation in the stairwells. Has that been resolved?
Yeah, we, we can absolutely put, it'd be single windows that look like windows.
Why not real?
We have to add a separation there. Windows that you can actually look out, they're extremely expensive, and you're back to the old price, the price point piece again, where we're already $2.5 million over, over budget as a result of everything that's going on. But we can make it look like windows so that they'll serve an aesthetic standpoint, but they'll also serve as a prior statement. You know, you want to.
What was the RSA you cited?
Say again?
676.
67460. That's an RSA for the state.
Okay.
Specifically dealing with the.
We'll take.
And there's, it is 58 through, 58 through 61. RSA 674, 58 through 61. Yeah, so there's obviously some RSAs on the books, we get to workforce as in this state. Okay.
All right.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Next up is a boundary line adjustment. I'll note for the record that Bill Hutwether is back at the table. All right, it's a boundary line adjustment. Michael Dick Marlowe requests the boundary line adjustment, the transfer of, transfer of land area between properties owned by Michael and Jennifer Gamarlo and Gamarlo Incorporated. And that would be you, you're up. Do you have anybody out? You have a surveyor up to make your presentation? Are you going to make, making a presentation? Well, just go ahead and make the presentation, the written one.
We align our technology on around 39 Cobble Hill on both sides, and plus there's that we can't be used. Then the Malo Saint Hill within three feet of the property line of 39 Cobble Hill, annoyingly. About 25 years ago. So what, what I'm trying to prove is should, should line out so that 39 Cobble Hill will have a little more property than what they had. It's a little over, almost an eighth, not quite, there's a few tenths more, and that the Malo Saint, yes, the distance they need to be compliant. And that's, that's the cost of the city.
That's the cost of it. Has everyone seen the plan? If not, there's a copy of it right over there. Everyone's seen it. It's pretty straightforward what he wants to do. It does actually straighten out some of the property lines there from the thing of it. I just had a question. Is that, that little sliver that looked like it went out to Cobble Hill Road, is that going to remain a right-of-way for the Models Incorporated? Or is it going to be a right-of-way? There's, there's the little piece, you know, as the.
That's a D V strip.
Oh, it's a D V strip to that.
That, that goes to Gamarlo Saint. It's owned by Gamarlo Saint.
But that's going to become part of this lot line adjustment, correct?
Yes.
So are you going to retain a right-of-way through there for the Models Incorporated?
It has to be a right-of-way to the telephone company, because they have a house at the end of that.
Oh, do they?
A little kind of switching house.
But it's not a drive, not going to be a right-of-way driveway. That's what I wanted.
That's what I'm trying to avoid. We got the permit in 85. Mrs. Fattman complained that they, she didn't want trucks going up and down the road, and I said, no, there won't be any trucks, so Gamarlo Saint can't use it anyway, and it's much better to square up the piece and make it a neighborhood.
Yeah, looks more, looks like that's a better, better configuration of the property. Any board members have any questions on this? And if not, do any of the public, general public have any questions, or anybody here for this one? And then, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, which I probably didn't open in the first place, but I'll close it anyway. And we can discuss it. Anybody have any, any sayings on this, anything, why it shouldn't or should be done? Looks straightforward to me, and it's a good idea. If not, then a motion to approve the lot line adjustment would be in order.
I'll make the motion to approve the lot line adjustment.
Motion by Brandon to approve the lot line adjustment. Is there a second? Seconded by Michael York. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And you have a second? Bring some copies up to the land planning office? You'll need to bring, you know, Mylar up to have it registered in that, Mylar to bring to the planning office.
I got the surveyor, and, and he was on vacation, otherwise I'd have it at night.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll have it in the public meeting next week, so we can get a sign.
All right. Thank you. Okay, the, the next item is the one I moved up from discussions. It's the middle school edition, and as I think this school, or if anybody from the school board or school here is going to give us a small presentation on that, we took a look at the plans and we just, yeah, come on up. And we're just, we're having a, and I'll open up the public hearing.
Chanel Moore, I'm the business administrator for the school district.
I have Tony Green, Interim Facilities Director.
I'm sorry, the first name?
Tony Green.
Thank you.
Interim Facilities Director.
So we did bring the plans with us. You said you had a chance to review those.
Yeah, we have, I think, all the members out here, but we discussed it at another meeting. We'll decide whether we're going to have you come in or not for just the formality, but.
That's great.
So, oh, yeah, go ahead and make the presentation.
In March of 2020, the voters approved this project. It's a four-classroom addition to the middle high school. It is not specifically for the middle school, I just wanted to make sure, make that clarification. This four-classroom addition will allow us to remove the temporary classrooms off the front of the school that have been there for probably 30 years. The four-classroom addition, if you had a chance to look at the plans, it's not in that same location, it's off the east side of the school. We put the engineering and design out to bid last year, and that was awarded to Parker Architects. And then we put the construction out to bid, and that was awarded to DEW. I'm not sure what else you'd like to know.
Well, that's, you know, that's a good, good start, you know? Like I say, we saw the plans, and we just generally bring you in, just in case any members of the public have questions for you, or any members of the board have questions for you on that. It, it looks like it's going to be nice to get rid of those temporary buildings out front of the school, you know? And this one is going behind the school and back in there. Yep. So what? Any other plans for where those classrooms aren't out, the ones you're going to tear down, or is that just going to be lawn out there? What are you going to do? Just lawn, yeah, okay. Any members of the board have any questions on this? And any members of the public have any question on the school addition? I guess not, having none been a vote of support, because we aren't approving or denying an application, we're just saying if we're going to support it or not, so motion for support for the additions would be in order?
I'll move at least four additions.
Motion support by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
I'd just like to say also, if anybody has any questions or would like to come by for a site visit any time, they'll be glad to take you on tour and show you progress.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
That was right. Okay, next on the agenda is the planning board number 22-008, and that is a site plan review application. For John Flatley Company requests a site plan review for a 208-unit multifamily residential development and a 5,000-square-foot light industrial flex space building on the property at 244 Old Holmes Street Highway, and that's shown at Tax Map 19 Lot 98. Subject property is located in the Industrial Park District. Oh, yeah. Two, both of you.
Desert it all. Barney, you got desert it all.
I know, I don't know what you're going on here. I guess so. Something I said. Yes. That's right. Yeah. And then, if we have a public hearing, I'll try and remember to open it. Okay.
Oh, are they? I've been by there, but not. Those temporary rooms were blimsy 10 years ago. I remember walking in there for, for parents' night ones, like, I can feel the floor. I've seen.
Those are the same ones that have been there for.
Jane and Billy and Lily.
I know, those are the same ones I was in, when I was there 20 years ago.
Yeah, I said that in temporary, I was.
Yeah.
Temporary.
Temporary.
Oh, it was quite a package. Did everybody get a chance to do most of it? That was kind of small on some of the screen there, but it's, you got a lot of it, a lot of it doesn't take in there. I'd say Sarah did a good job of summing the whole thing up, I would say. That was a nice job on that. There's a lot, a lot of reading, a lot of work to do in there. She gave us plenty. That's for sure.
I don't tolerate it like that.
All right.
Yeah. Because we can see that up there. It's up to you, if you want it, if it's for us, set up right there. Okay. As the other consumer. All right.
That seemed a little out of focus there.
No, I was thinking that same thing, that is smart.
Can you focus that in a little bit better?
Okay.
Maybe it'd be better if you chat, maybe better if it just sat right over there, you know? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of feel like that's one, clicking in and out of plans might be. To check out, zooming in and out.
I'll check out there, zooming in and out. Set up right there, so everyone, so the public and everybody can just set up right there. It's not even putting it in there. Are you ready? Okay, Chad, well Chad, just, just give us a, this is for the second, as if it's complete or not complete. So just give us a rundown of what is included, material, and the drawings are included and what is included in the drawings, and also the waivers that you're looking for. And we'll deal with those, and then getting into public hearing, then we'll do the whole presentation.
Okay, perfect. Well, good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Chad Graham, someone near and feel some like it's all. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street, over in Hampshire. With me tonight is Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company and Jason Flora, who is the traffic engineer with VHP. So, I guess. Without doing a formal presentation, I can just tell what we've submitted. So what we've submitted tonight is a site plan application for mixed use development, which consists of a 5,000 square foot flex building along Route 32, Old Homestead Highway, and then a multifamily residential development interior to the lot, which consists of a clubhouse and four 52 unit buildings totaling 208 units with associated site improvements. So our submission package to the town, just kind of a brief overview, really contemplated a full design plan set, which includes a site layout plan, which really deals with kind of the two dimensional elements of the site. You know, dimensional standards for access roads, parking spaces, radiuses for turning areas, as well as just dimensional standards on the site. We meet all the dimensional standards that you have here in town, pertaining to, you know, size of parking, you actually exceed the access with standards. We meet all the buffering requirements to adjacent properties. The plan set also includes a grading plan, which shows what, what needs to be done to the property in order to construct the site. So we detail retaining walls and areas. We show that we are meeting ADA compliance from all of our handicap parking spaces to the site amenities or to the buildings. We also show that the parking meets your town standards. We're not exceeding 5% in any areas where within the parking areas, so that's important. Details. That plan also details erosion and sedimentation controls, as well as stormwater management practices that we've designed for this project. Which really includes three subsurface stormwater chamber systems and two stormwater management areas, one of which is an infiltration basin and the other, which would likely be a gravel well for this project. So, we've included all of those details, and then as you go through the plans, we also include a landscaping plan, lighting plan, which shows that we, you know, meet the lighting standards in the ordinance, and then we, we address construction details. Along with that plan set, we submitted a traffic study, which was prepared by VHP. We submitted a fiscal impact study, which was prepared by Fuchair Planning. And we also submitted architectural plans. In addition to that, we've, you know, we've done, you know, the stormwater management design, which will comply with the alteration of terrain standards, which exceeds your local standards for stormwater. So, by default, that permit is going to handle all of the stormwater elements for this project. Along with that submission package to the town, we, we did include a waiver request. The waiver request pertains to the landscaping internally on site for islands within a parking lot. You know, you have, there's two sections under the landscaping standards and the site regulations that pertain to landscape islands. One section states that you have to have a landscape island for every 10 parking spaces. And that would be pretty cumbersome as you go through the parking along the front of the buildings. Another section says where you have landscape islands, it shall be 200 square feet in size minimum, and you should have at least, I believe it's two trees and shrubs planted three feet on the center. Well, in this particular development, and really in any multifamily development that's, that's located internally like this, in the landscape islands is actually where you're typically placing site. And so site lighting is not really an area, if you're gonna place a light pole, is it really an area that you want to place a tree? So what we've done is, we've laid the landscaping plan out, where it really, we believe meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance, because we have far exceeded the number of trees that are required and the number of shrubs, and, and, you know, certainly flowers and so on, that are required in the ordinance. It's not a numbers issue, it's really a planning issue, you know, practical issue, as to where these things should be located. The other thing to think about is islands, landscape islands generally, their, their main purpose is for traffic control. It's to make sure people are driving appropriately through a parking area. We would consider this to be a conventional parking lot internally in multifamily development. So, one could question whether some of those standards are really applicable here. This isn't a shopping plaza or retail store, you know, something like that. So in this particular setting, we're trying to put light, lighting, and we also have utilities that are running to the building. And some of those utilities conflict and run through the landscape islands, just because of the way the design has come together. So we are asking for a waiver only from the sections pertaining to landscape islands. But we've taken that landscaping that we typically be there, and we've repositioned it in close proximity to the, where the islands would be. So in front of the buildings, along the perimeter of the parking area, and so on. So those are our two landscape waivers. We believe in going through the site plan regulations that we have satisfied all the requirements. Certainly some of them kind of get required as you work through an approval and ultimately secure state permits, like they, that they have been in the past on many other projects. But we certainly believe the, the submission package is completed. I think staff did a very thorough review of the package. We've met with them a couple times, and it's my understanding that, that, you know, all the details are, are in place. So happy to answer any questions, well, to share.
Could you show us the modified landscape plan, since we'll be voting on the waiver before we go into public hearing? So just show us what you're figuring on landscape plan. That's the only detailed part that we need to see at this point.
So, if you're taking a look at the site, and again, without getting into, you know, a lot of detail, when you, when you, when you come into the project, this industrial building has 12 parking spaces. Technically, two more spaces than the, the 10. So I think the technical interpretation is you would have to have a landscape island, you know, somewhere in the middle there. What we've done is we've proposed street trees along the front of the site, in excess of what the requirements are. And then we've done, we've included a significant amount of landscaping on the top side of this building here, which, you know, so we've taken that landscaping that would typically be in, you know, maybe in front of the building here, and we, we shifted it to the, you know, to the side. The other part about a landscape area in that particular location, is it would really be a maintenance problem. You would have to plow around that for two, you know, two spaces. It's just not a real effective location for an island. So what we have designed is a stormwater infiltration area on the bottom side of this building, the south side of this building here. And the snow would be ultimately plowed in that direction, and any snowmelt would, you know, would go into that basin there. Again, kind of part of the reason why we've positioned all the, you know, the landscaping on the north side, and then along the highway side of this particular structure. As you come into the site, you have the clubhouse area here. We have a significant amount of landscaping along the front of that building. We've basically taken any of the landscaping that would be, again, in one island here. I believe we have, well, over 15 parking spaces here. 16 parking spaces here. So in theory, there would be, again, one island, I think, internally on that. Same reason, that would create, you know, kind of an issue for maintenance. But also, we think it would look better to take that landscaping and kind of put it along the front of the building in this application. And then we have, you know, a street tree here at the entrance. So definitely taking that landscaping and then some, and positioning it around the perimeter of the parking. This area here, and those snow storages are concerned, and it kind of plays in and handling landscaping, so just want to talk about it at the same time. The snow would be plowed at this location. There's a, there's kind of an elevated platform there that, that would drain internally, so any snowmelt would go into this stormwater chamber system here before discharging out. So, that's why we're not proposing any significant landscaping in this location on the west side of that particular parking lot. As you come internally to the site, we have, you know, ADA parking spaces, spaces located in front of each unit, each building. And technically speaking, we have 30, we have a run of 30 parking spaces along the front of each building. So those are the other areas that we would need to have a landscape island. When you think about, you know, that location, what we've done is taken all the landscaping that would be in that island, and we've put it on the backside of the curb in front of all these buildings. If you are able to, to look, there's a lot of trees and shrubbery situated between the backside of the sidewalk and the front of these buildings. It's their typical landscape plan, and, and again, far exceeds the number in the requirement. But we think that would be, it's just a more practical design along the front of the buildings. The end islands is where we have some of the lighting. So you can see in this particular, if you've had a chance to look at the plan, the end cap island, as you leave the clubhouse and kind of take a right and head to your first building, we're not proposing a tree there. But we're not proposing trees and shrubs there. It's supposed to be multiple trees, actually, but we're not proposing those there, because that's where we have the street light. So we have a light located there, we have signage located there, and then there's actually some drains, because we have closed drainage that, that normally is in very close proximity to these end cap islands. Reason being is you typically have drainage at intersections where roads, you know, come together. So you have a, you have utilities underground that actually conflict with planting trees. It's just not a practical or a good place to plant a tree. So we're not proposing a tree there, but we, we have relocated the landscaping element. For example, we have trees on the backside of the, of the access in this location, you know, the first garage. And as you continue onto the site, kind of that same design really repeats. I mean, we have trees located, you know, in the landscape area off the end of the building, but it didn't make sense in this island, because again, you have a light, you have a stop sign, you have a lot of competing interests there, where it doesn't make sense to, you know, plant trees. They become obstructions ultimately to what we would consider good practical design. And they actually can create some safety concerns at areas where you should have a lot of wood lines of sight. So we've just decided, we're trying to pull those features internally a little bit, but still far exceeding the landscape requirements that, that you have. So that really carries, you know, kind of throughout the layout, you know, in front of all four of the buildings. What I can say is, you know, when I read the regulations, there's obviously, you know, a spirit and intent that is meant to apply to everywhere in town. Right? So, a site plan generally speaking, you know, it could be that that intent is, when you're driving by market basket, let's say, you want to have landscaping here and break up this mass area of parking. That's not what we have here. We have an access road with parking on one side, garages on the other, and then the landscape the entire way. So those islands don't really need to protrude out into that single area, or that single parking bay, to accomplish what we think the goals and objectives really are, are. So we don't think that a strict application of the ordinance would violate, or we do think that a strict application of the ordinance, you know, would violate the spirit of intent in this location, because it's not a traditional parking lot setup. So we're requesting a waiver from really just the line, those two landscape island parts. And we hope that, you know, that through your review of the plan, you'll notice that, you know, considering the vast, you know, amount of landscaping and ordinance position, there has been a lot of thought put into this layout. We definitely looked at, you know, how is it gonna function? How is it gonna be successful over time? Because the John Flatley Company, you know, they, they definitely manicure the landscaping, they manage it really well. It's gonna be vibrant. But we don't want to be, I don't want to pong me in 10 years of going, you know, why are we moving all these trees? They're getting too big for this location. And we're trying to avoid that here.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the board members as to the completeness of the application or to the waiver that they're requesting? And if no questions about either of them, let's deal with the waiver first. We, we need a motion granting them the waiver from the landscaping. Okay, a motion by Michael to grant the waiver from the landscaping regulations. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now let's tackle the completeness of the application. We've all seen, I think, most of it there. Anybody have any questions on whether it is complete, is not complete? If you feel that it is complete, then a motion to accept the application as complete and to move on to public hearing would be in order.
One question.
Yes.
Noticing from the zoning board's waiver, there is an FAA question. Has that been resolved?
Was it a permit from the FAA?
Right. The FAA was supposed to be reviewing the application. I'm going to assume that it is, whether or not it interferes with the glide path from the east-west runway.
That might be what they're considering, but it may take them a while to go through that. We can still move along with the public hearing. That would fall under actually administrative conditions, and we were talking about it one of our other meetings here. If the FAA does not grant them, or has a problem with it, then that would be a problem. Project stopper for them. But the board has no jurisdiction over the FAA anyway.
No, I, I understand.
I mean, I mean, we can't hold the, we can't hold an applicant up because of another board. In that regard, I don't think anyways, anybody think anything different there?
I think you're reviewing, I think that's correct.
But the question was, are they reviewing?
Yes, so I, I can answer that. We've done the survey of the, of the runway. We've calculated the glide slope from the runway to the site. There's no projections into the glide slope. We typically don't file with FAA until we get a conditional approval at, at the town, in case anything changes, because they require, you know, us to basically provide the most popularly, you know, the latest plan. Because they require, you know, us to basically provide the most popularly, you know, the latest plan. And we we don't want to file it twice. But we have, um you know, we're very confident that we're not going to have any issues with, um you know, filing that permit, just like the other state permits. Um we just, we have not filed that yet. We would hope for reconsider that as a condition.
And that's right.
Yeah, that does. And then we're actually going to um make a motion that their. Their application is complete. Is that what you're?
Uh or it isn't.
Okay, so you have, yeah, you have, you have concerns in here from uh. The water department, North Swansea, and the local town. DOT on the condition of the road and who is going to be responsible for taking care of that. Are we going to be putting that in as a condition?
That again would fall under an administrative decision or or condition rather. Because it's something the planning board doesn't have control over in that regard. The water company has their own rules and regulations they go by. And actually, the town, I I think you're talking about the road agent.
Correct.
For who's going to take care of that. Again, that's decided. Uh we can certainly suggest what happens there. But it's it's not something that would make the application, in my opinion anyways, incomplete. Just because the road agent hasn't weighed in on on who's going to take care of the road or something. You know, we're we're pretty much deciding if it's complete enough to go ahead with a public hearing. To see if uh if it meets our site plan review regulations and the zoning regulations of the town of Swansea. That's what the planning board does anyways. Don't vary from those at all. And that's what the CBA is for. But those two things anyways aren't aren't part of a zoning ordinance. But um anything else?
Nope.
Nothing you can think of right now. Okay, well, I have some for the public hearing. Anybody else with anything that regarding the completeness of the application? And if not, then a motion would be in order to find it either complete or incomplete.
Can I make a move that the application is complete?
Motion by Michael York that the application is complete and in your motion, would you suggest that we go ahead on to a public hearing this evening?
Yes.
Add that into motion. Okay. Uh is there a second?
A second.
Okay, second by, I forgot your name. Michael?
Yes.
Yes, Michael. I knew you two sitting together, that's why. But anyway, second by Michael Day. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate us saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? Okay, the application is complete and we will move on to public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Now, now you may make your presentation.
I'll try not to be redundant. That's um good evening again for the record, Chad Green, Civil Engineer, Phil Stone, Lincoln. Um looking for you tonight for a site plan, seeking a site plan approval um for multi-use development over tax map. Eight, nine, eight. Um the subject property consists of twenty-six, twenty-three acres of land. And is situated on the east side of Old Homestead Highway. Has a physical address of two forty-four Old Homestead Highway. Um and essentially, the property is positioned at the intersection of Old Homestead Highway and Safford Drive. The property is located in the um industrial park district. And on November fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh the John Flatt Company was successful before the zoning board in obtaining two variances. The first variance was to permit um a residential development uh over the subject property. Uh because a residential use was not otherwise permitted in the industrial park district. The second variance had to do with building heights uh greater than forty-five feet. Um as the multifamily residential structures, the four of them do exceed that height. Since the November meeting, our design team has been working pretty diligently on pulling together the package. Um for submission, uh which which everybody really has the the majority of those details in in front of them. Uh we've completed a in existing conditions survey of the property. We've done all the jurisdictional wetlands mapping, soil testing. Um we've completed the traffic studies, stormwater management report. Uh we had actually a wildlife consultant look at the property from a wildlife standpoint for some state permitting. Uh that came back favorable. I mean, we've we've pulled all this information together and put this design package together. And made the submission uh for site plan approval. The, I guess the most logical way to to handle this presentation would be just, you know, kind of walk through the plan set. And 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 touch on, um you know, uh some of the design elements and some of those details. So starting with the existing conditions of the property. This site is occupied by three units of multifamily building. That building is situated in this um kind of northwest corner right here. Um has a uh existing barn and and associated site improvements such as driveway and utility connections. All of those existing improvements will be raised as part of this project. The topography on site generally slopes from um east to west. In this location, in this direction here. So this is the highest part of the property here. It drains from um east to west down towards uh Old Homestead Highway. And there are, there are jurisdictional wetlands on site which are depicted on this plan in kind of this light green hatch. Essentially, there's two wetland systems that run on either side of the property. That that leave an upland area in the center center location, which is generally the area that we're proposing. Um development to try to minimize any disturbances. The property does have uh three hundred and, just shy of three hundred and ninety-one feet of furniture along Old Homestead Highway. Then it has about ninety-one feet of furniture, excuse me, ninety-four feet of furniture on Safford Drive. The proposed development for this project again consists of a five thousand square foot. Um light industrial building, what we were calling the flex building. Uh which is situated along Old Homestead Highway on the front of the project. Um we're proposing that the parking is situated along the highway side of the uh building. That's essentially where, you know, customers will go, employees may park. And the reason for that orientation is it allows us to put the bay doors on the backside of the building. Providing some, you know, buffering from the highway. So the activity areas will be situated on the um backside, deliveries, you know, any loading, um and so on. Moving internally from the site, um we we just. Right, that the main entrance to the site is proposed off of uh Route thirty-two or Old Homestead Highway. So this would be the main entrance. And then moving internally, you know, before we we turn to the south. Um we do have an entrance proposed as well onto Safford Drive. You may recall when we were last before this poor um very conceptual phase, there was a, there was some good dialogue about. You know, that particular curb out. At the time, we were proposing that that be an emergency um access and it be gated. And there was quite a few questions that were raised um um at that meeting, at that conceptual meeting. Pertaining to, well, wouldn't it make sense to at least have that be paid for people that might be traveling to the west? Or people who may be coming to the site from the west. Um you know, we we had some time to to talk about that after the meeting. We did think, I mean, you know, a lot of sense. So that people don't have to come down to this intersection, turn onto the highway just to turn into the site. Or, you know, the, you know, the the opposite. Um you know, turn out of the main entrance just to turn on the Safford Drive. So. We have included that as a a formal um access to this project. Um so that'll be paid. There'll be no restrictions um and so on. Moving further internally to the site and heading south, um this is where we have our one uh level impact to the project. It's unavoidable because the project is dissected by this particular wetland finger on the north side of the site. Um so in order to get to this large upland area, we have to cross the wetland. We've configured this layout so that we're crossing in the in the narrowest area. Um that particular wetland crossing will be about two thousand square feet in size. Um the drainage is sized appropriately and we certainly have detailed the appropriate erosion and sedentation controls um through that area. As you come internally on, uh further into the site, on the right-hand side is where the clubhouse will be. The clubhouse will have a pool associated with it. There's also, there's also other site amenities kind of provided internally in the clubhouse. Um as well as barbecue, you know, spaces and so on on the outside. Um appropriate parking uh provided for the clubhouse. We have eighty-eight uh handicapped spaces. And and, you know, this area as well as all the other areas on site have been graded to meet those standards as well as parking lot design. Um standards as I stated a little bit earlier. Moving further into the site, we have our first multifamily building on the right-hand side. Um these buildings are about fifty-six thousand square feet in size. Um and they have fifty-two units in them, uh four-story uh buildings. See, we have the uh parking um situated along the front of the building and then generally with the the buildings, we also have kind of a a. A bump out parking area um situated between them. All the parking for this development meets your standards. We have three hundred and sixty-nine parking spaces proposed. Uh forty of them will be garage spaces, which is another um site amenity. Every building has a ten-stall garage um associated with it. So for this first building, we have a garage situated on the opposite side of the access road. And then as you continue on, you have the same effect, building two garage on the other side. Moving further into the site, building three is head-on. This garage was positioned to the right of the building, or to the left if you're facing it, on the uh north side anyways. Um and that was primarily, it had to do with uh grading fire truck apparatus, you know, for uh lines of sight and and just maneuvering through the uh property. And then finally, we have the fourth building here on the north, kind of this northeast side of the site, if you will, with the garage. Situated across from from that as well. This project does have, um you know, some grading associated with it, right? We have, the the project has some higher elevations for that, and then it drops um to the front. We've shown in the design plan all the associated uh work that needs to be done. So with that particular grading and that cut in the back, uh what we've shown is how that slope's going to be graded. We've shown benches for um stormwater treatment. The design of that slope meets the state alteration of terrain um standards. Because they do regulate that for an erosion and sedimentation control purpose. What they're generally trying to avoid is long stretches of runoff over steep slopes, which makes sense. So we have two uh drainage benches proposals along that back slope. We're basically taking the material from this portion of the site and we're filling along the the uh front portions. Because if you can imagine with these buildings, you have a pretty level area, you know, so we're going to be leveling areas and using that material on site. The good news is, is through all the soil testing that we've done, um the materials on site are very sandy. It's a nice um coarse sand. We hit no ledge. Um so the sand is good for a couple of reasons. Great for construction. Um but it's also great for stormwater um management and stormwater mitigation. So that kind of transitions into another design element of this project, which is, what are we doing with this farm? That was a real big concern um when we were before the zoning board. It's always a concern of projects. How is this project going to have an impact on stormwater? The good news is, this project requires an alteration of terrain permit. And what that means is the design standards are high. Uh we have to make sure that there's no increase in the peak rate of runoff uh leaving this site. And that's exactly what's happening here. How are we accomplishing that is through the implementation of a series of stormwater treatment practices. So this back portion of the site, you know, this kind of back corner here. Drains to a chamber system that we've designed under the parking area adjacent to building four. Um great soils in that area. We're going to be filling a little bit. We'll be getting a lot of infiltration um through the soils there. So we have a chamber system situated here. This portion of the site along the southern side will go to a stormwater management area that we have kind of on the east side of the site. That's going to be a uh. A gravel wetland likely because we are closer to the ground on our location. We have a series of best management practices incorporated throughout the site, treatments wells, torays, um you know, and so on. So. How does, how does everything get to these locations is through a series of closed and drainage systems. In the parking area and all the parking lots, we're proposing a curved um closed drainage system. We have to capture all the runoff from all the previous areas as part of the state permit. And so that's, that's what we're doing. So we have a series of closed drainage system that cap captures everything and routes everything to these stormwater management practices. Part of the reason why we're requesting the landscape waivers is because it just so happens that. You know, we're going through a fair amount of those landscape islands with this network of of uh utilities. On the, for the clubhouse, because the clubhouse is kind of built on an island, if you will, this upland area. Um surrounded by wetlands on the on the uh east and uh north and south. We've, we've uh again done uh some curving closed drainage system and we've, we've uh. Proposing a a chamber system in that location as well. That will infiltrate um because we've, we've designed that to be an adequate distance between uh the seasonal high water table. Again, meeting all treatment standards, um you know, certainly locally and at the state level. Then the front side of the site, um we're doing some stormwater management on the, on this northeast corner. Um that's going to be an infiltration area. So it's basically going to look like a mold lawn with landscaping all around it. Because we had good soil results there for building infiltrate any stormwater from the roadway, the access roadway, the entranceway. And we are taking a little bit of the parking area in that direction as well. And then we have another stormwater uh management area to this, on the south side of the flex uh building to capture that. So in general, this is a very brief summary of the stormwater details that are incorporated in this project. It's a pretty complex system, um but it certainly meets and exceeds all uh local and state um design standards. Moving on to other utilities, this site will be serviced by municipal sewer and water. Municipal sewer is available right along uh Route thirty-two or Old Homestead Highway. So what we've done is we've extended, you know, that utility internally on the site. It's technically a mu- municipal extension, so it does require a permit to the Department of uh Barman Services for. Um a sewer, it's called a sewer discharge permit. We don't anticipate any issues. It's a pretty straightforward um design. Uh I think the staff memo from the sewer commission basically states that we have to file. Um you know, an application with them ultimately to submit to the state for a sewer discharge permit. That's, that's a very normal process. We do that all the time. Uh we don't anticipate any issues with that. Basically paid based on, you you know, the flow that you're going to be contributing to the system. For water, the water situation is a little bit different. Um and I think that was something that was raised as part of completeness. So what's the situation with the water? Well, the water department, just like on all other projects that we've done. They're pretty good about saying, hey, we can't guarantee that we're going to have the volume or the pressure, but the water's there. All that really means is we have to do a design, right? That design's typically done as part of the building permit process. Um we've shown the infrastructure as far as the network. We showed the the piping. We show the hydrants. We show everything that's going to be required. But ultimately, if testing is done and there's not enough pressure or there's not enough water, that can be solved on site. We can have storage tanks and we can have a booster pump. So the water system has a solution. It's just we have to work through kind of those nitty-gritty details. It's just we have to work through kind of those nitty gritty details. We have to do flow tests. We have to take a look at that. And that changes over time. So when developments happen or when things are done in different places in the network, it can change that. So we have to revisit that. And the way this board has always handled that in the past is that's generally a condition of approval so that we know what we're dealing with when we design that system. It's a pretty simple process. If we don't have water, we don't have a project. We have to we have to address fire suppression. We have to address domestic supply. And we have every intention of doing that. We don't foresee any issues with that because we know we have the ability to solve any problems with that through storage and, you know, potential waste costs. Other utilities, we're looking at underground for electric communications and communications, excuse me. We've kind of showed that layout. I'd love to tell you that I'm a utility expert, but it seems to be every time we submit those to the ever source, they want to change that the location of that layout just a little bit. So we show it where we think everything's going to be and we're normally pretty close. I mean, the transformers are generally going to be near the structures. They like to have access, so we always try to position them close to parking spaces or close to an accessway. And then we show, you know, kind of that conduit network on the utility plans going to each structure. Heat for this project, our clients currently looking at potentially doing heat pumps actually, so we we are not showing propane locations. We have contemplated propane locations. We know we can position propane tanks if we need to on the layout, but currently they want to do heat pumps. So that's what we're planning on for this project. Would likely, you know, be roof mounted equipment. And the building design is a it's a four-story design. I think we reviewed this at the conceptual meeting. Building design has not changed. So you have a four-story structure. And then you have, you know, kind of these parrot roof. Basically, it's a faux roof that hides all the utilities that are on the roof. Be positioned behind that. So that's what they're looking at doing there. For site lighting, the site lighting for this project is provided through a series of building mounted primarily on the garage and on the flex building up front and full mounted lighting. I did see, I think the conservation commission had a concern about is the the lighting design compliant? Is it dark sky compliant? And the answer is yes, it is. I I can understand why they asked the question. It's a very good question. If you look at the the site light. It's a lantern style light. Which has, you know, this has this, you know, the glass along all the sides here. So I'm sure the concern is is that you're going to see the light, right? That light is going to be shining out through the lantern. But the way this particular light is designed is that hood right there is actually where the light is. So the light is located on the top side of that structure so that the light casts down through the glass. But you can't see the light fixture. So it is a night sky compliant light. But it's a it's a very good question because when you see the detail, it does beg the question. We get asked that question almost all the time on that particular fixture. But the lighting, we did put together a lighting boomers plan, shows that we do meet the lighting requirements. You know, it's a pretty pretty standard lighting plan for the John Flattley Company. We try to really find balance between safety and quality of life. We don't want the lights just blasting through people's windows. But we have to make sure that there's adequate lighting in the parking area and certainly for people, you know, leaving earlier coming home. So we think we've addressed, you know, all of the concerns or questions there, but we're happy to, you know, happy to answer anything that people may have relative to that. We touched on the landscaping plan, I feel like when we were in the compliance section, but generally speaking, the site, there's the John Flattley Company sites are very well landscaped. And, you know, we we have far exceeded the quantity standards that that are outlined in the town regulations just because they their properties have a, you know, have a certain requirement internally. So we believe we've we've addressed that, but certainly happy to to answer any questions relative to that as well. For this project, there there are a number of state permits that we will have to obtain. We have the wetlands permit for the wetland processing that we're proposing. That's a minimum next providing permits because we're under three thousand square feet, but still permitting process through the through the state. We also have the sewer discharge permit for the extension of the municipal sewer system. We have the alteration of train permit, which is the, you know, pretty substantial permit for stormwater mitigation. I mean, that's really what they it was really a water quality permit. And they address, you know, a lot of site design elements, drainage, drainage, sediment, erosion control. So we've designed this plan to meet those standards and we will hopefully go through a review with them in the very near future for successful work for us. Other permits that we have to secure is the New Hampshire Department of Transportation access permit. And we also need the FAA federal permit. Basically, kind of more of a notice where, you know, they review our interpretation and say, yes, you know, that's not going to create issues for advice about where the airport. And we've done a number of those. There's many properties that have to go through that adjacent to the to the airport. So we look forward to following that as well. As it pertains to other items within the regulations, we do believe that this site in this layout meets all the regulations, whether it's, you know, parking setbacks, buffering, impervious cover, building coverage. We have, we we have met all of those criteria. This site is is pretty neat in that, you know, it has a fair amount of restrictions in the buildable area is really located internally and kind of isolated towards the back. And that's resulted in a development that has significant buffering to its surroundings. And we have Carlisle up here in the corner. We have a substantial buffer to our property line, but also to their improvements is, you know, is even further. We think that's going to be great for 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 everybody, you know, it's going to create a nice, you know, setting for housing. You know, situated a little removed from the highway. It'll be good privacy. We don't want to see them, you know, if once this project's built anymore than other people probably want to see the site. So we do believe this design is, you know, really accomplishes that. We have a great deal of of buffering through here, you know, obviously through this zone, we're building an access road, but on the other side of that, we have a pretty substantial area here that's buffering. I spent a fair amount of time this week, you know, walking the project and getting internally, you know, looking around and you don't have to walk very far into the woods before you can't see out. There's a lot of growth in in under stories. So we're going to we're going to obviously cut a fair amount, you know, to build the project, but there's still going to be a great perimeter buffer, which we think will provide for a very nice project. We one other thing I wanted to touch on here. Along with the rating of the site, there are some retaining walls that are required internally for this project. All of those will be designed and scanned by a structural engineer. That's normally the way Swansea's handled those in in the past in other projects. We are anticipating probably a modular block wall. It really looked nice and actually fitted well with with landscaping. We've done a number of those on other projects as well as on John Flattley projects in in various communities. Reason why we propose those is it actually it kind of accomplishes two things. It reduces the footprint that we're disturbing and it also you know, minimizes in this case the jurisdictional impacts to the wetland areas. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I could hand the floor over to our traffic consultant. There's been a brief update on where we are with that and kind of speak to that. And then at any point, we'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions that the board may have.
Just one brief question while you're up there. Why is it that the wetland areas do not affect your stormwater infiltration system?
Sure. It has to do with location. So location and elevation. So for example, here we dug test pits, multiple test pits in the locations that we're proposing infiltration. Many of the test pits, like for example, we'll pick this one back here. The test pits were about thirty-six inches to seasonal high water table. Right? But then we're filling in this particular location, we're filling the site. So there's there's an adequate area for infiltration. So it's a great question because you would think, well, with all these wetlands, there's no depth of the seasonal, but there's actually a fair amount of elevation relief from the wetlands to the buildable area. So we meet all the separation of seasonal and and all that criteria.
So soils are different there where the wetlands are, are basically the same soil underneath the wetlands as you had in a billboard.
Yeah, no, that's a good question too. So I did talk to our soil scientists about that because I was surprised by how good the soils were. And they essentially said that it's a it's a sandy soil in the wetlands, but there's always water. So wetland soils, generally speaking, and I'm not a soil scientist or wetland scientist, but what they tell me is that if you have water within six inches of the surface for four to six months a year, you're going to get the soils over time and you're going to have the vegetation. And those are the three factors that you have to have in order to meet jurisdictional wetlands. So in areas that we are mapping jurisdictional wetlands, you have, you know, you have this plant species. You have the water, the hydrology, and you have the soils, which is, you know, basically, you know, you'll have darker soils, grayer soils because the water's there all the time. But when you get, you know, into the upland areas, you get into really nice sand, it's just a different soil class, different elevation as well. And I think that's consistent. So what they look, yeah, you're welcome. And what they look at is they look at surrounding areas too. I mean, the the fairgrounds area and the properties north of that are predominantly pretty sandy soils. So, you know, we were hoping that we were going to find that here, but with the amount of wetlands, we didn't know if there was going to be some kind of soil change onsite we would experience. And that wasn't the case, so it was a pleasant surprise.
Any other questions while he's here? He'll be back up here. But any other questions on what we're talking about here before we get to the traffic study?
Can you show us where the postal box is going to be if you know yet? Because usually you have to get the post office as well. I'm sure they're going to.
Let's save that. Let's get the traffic study in. Let's save that question for when he's going to pull one side. Get the traffic study out of there.
Thank you. Good evening, Jason Ford of the H P. Little bit of an update since the last time we met, we met with you all. We prepared the traffic study and the traffic study, as you remember, was developed based on scoping with the New Hampshire DOT, Southwest Regional Planning Commission, and local officials. And so what happens at a scoping meeting is it's not just me putting together a traffic study and saying, here we go. It's really everybody sitting around the table telling, you know, deciding what intersections each people that, what time periods need to be studied, the different methodologies that go into a traffic study. Different trip generation methodologies. And that's something I want to talk about is that we as traffic engineers are typically required to use the Institute of Transification Engineers, I T E. Trip generation mandate, and that's exactly what we did. So for residential developments, they classify different types of multi-family developments. They jumble in together townhouses, apartments, and condominiums, but they separate them based on low rise. That would be two to three stories high, mid-rise, which are for ten stories high, and then high-rise, which are built there. Where this development is going to be for four-story buildings, we were classified within the mid-rise category. So we use the I T E, which are the rated mission for the price development for the two hundred and eight units. As well as for the general industrial space that's right on the line. So that was all discussed and presented at that scoping meeting in due to be appropriate. So then it was a matter of going out and doing traffic counts at the right time periods to make sure that we weren't, you know, missing anything. And what we have to do as part of our traffic counts is that in New Hampshire, we have to adjust our traffic counts to meet peak month conditions. So we did our traffic counts in February and we had to increase those traffic counts by eighteen percent to be able to get to peak month conditions. We're in the pandemic, so we also had to take into consideration a pandemic factor. So the new Hampshire DOT requires us to be able to look at pre-pandemic conditions. So that's in two thousand and nineteen. So based on a comparison of traffic volumes in the area that New Hampshire DOT has, that we have to then take our peak month traffic counts and then adjust them by another six to seven percent to be able to reflect pre-pandemic condition. So that's the basis of the traffic study, to be able to get the traffic count and be able to come up with a baseline traffic warning condition. And that's exactly what we did. We then had to increase the traffic volumes to be able to represent opening year conditions and opening year plus ten year conditions. And that's based on the new Hampshire DOT policy. So opening year conditions, we reflected that as two thousand and twenty-three and then added along to two thousand and thirty-four. So what does that mean? What's included within those traffic volumes? Those future traffic volumes without air development are considered no build conditions. So that's two thousand and twenty-three no build and two thousand and thirty-three no build. And what are the traffic volumes going to look like then? Well, based on historical traffic counts in the area from New Hampshire DOT between two thousand, sorry, between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and nineteen, traffic volumes had been increasing in the area by point one five percent per year. New Hampshire DOT does not allow anything to be used less than one percent. So we then increased our traffic volumes by one percent comp on annual real rate to get to two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and thirty-three conditions. Those traffic volumes are then our future base conditions, where then we add our site trips on top of those traffic volumes to find out what our impacts are going to be associated with the development. Now Mr. Walker's probably going to get a little upset with me, but based on the trip generation for this development, we don't even we don't even trigger the thresholds to require a traffic study based on I T E and the New Hampshire DOT have all these. What is that threshold? That threshold is that if we're going to be generating or increasing traffic by one hundred vehicles per hour or more on an intersection approach, then we need to be able to take a look at that intersection. We need to find out what our impact could be because that means that there may be such a noticeable increase in traffic that there should be a different traffic control, you know, that is going from non-signalizing intersection, like we have that Stafford Drive and Homestead Road, Homestead Highway. You're putting a signal, but you're on some kind of different change out there. Or do we need to widen the roadway to be able to provide a southbound left turn lane to go on to Stafford Drive? Or a northbound right turn lane to go on to Stafford Drive? All of those traffic volume improvements we're looking at and none of them are warranted based on the new Hampshire DOT policy. So they have specific requirements that we need to follow when we're trying to figure out what kind of improvements might be needed. And that's really based on traffic zone conditions. All that said, when I talked about that hundred vehicle per hour threshold, that would be if we have a hundred vehicles per hour or more exiting the site, going through any intersections or even coming into the site. Our tool development is not going to be generating a hundred vehicles per hour or more. We're below that threshold even combined for integrated into the traffic. So what the reason why we had to do a traffic study is because we're on a state highway, Route thirty-two, and we have to file and we have to for an access permit, a driveway permit, for the access on Old Homestead Highway. What helps out a lot is that during the study, we talk about distribution. We talk about generation of trips. We talk about the layout, what driveways we should be using. We originally, as Chad mentioned, we originally intended to go in just the access point on Old Homestead Highway. Discussion started at that point and then continued on over time about having access on Stafford Drive. So what we did was we took a look at the distribution and the original discussion during the spoken meeting was, wow, there's so many people that are going to be living on this property that are going to try to go to Massachusetts and use Route twelve, which runs parallel to Route thirty-three, Old Homestead Highway. And until we said, okay, fine, we'll take a look at journey to work data, U S Census Bureau Journey to Work Data. We presented that to the state. The state has acknowledged it and accepted it, that actually the journey of our traffic is destined to the north on Route thirty-two. And that's just based on if our place of residency is Swansea, where are they going to for work? And that's kind of how you come up with the journey to work data, I think, coming up with a gravity model to find out where those cars are going to, where they're destined to. So even based on all of this information that I've just talked about, we still don't have a noticeable impact of it. What's a noticeable impact about our vehicles per hour on an intersection approach? And also is if you're increasing traffic, or I'm sorry, if you're increasing vehicle delay on a quicker movement. So that would be if I'm off of Stafford Drive from the angle turning left and turning right, coming down Old Homestead Highway, turning left into Stafford Drive or left into the site. If you're going to be increasing traffic volumes by ten seconds or more per delay, then that might be a noticeable impact. We're increasing traffic delays by four seconds or less. So we're not even close to the hundred vehicle per hour threshold, we're not even close to the increase of ten seconds in delay or more. So I'm certainly, you know, we're waiting on our feedback from DOT. So I don't want to sit here and say that DOT has already signed off on project A. We're still waiting on that feedback. So but they're going to improve their information view. So what happens is that the district office reviews the information, district board. They send the traffic study and the site language that's on to Bureau of Traffic and Bureau of Highway Design, Oldham Conqueror, so they will use. Then Bureau of Traffic and Bureau of Highway Design send their comments back to the district office, the district office then packages all the comments together and then sends them back to us and it'll read the site map on on all of the traffic volumes and the impacts and everything in the traffic study, or we need to address some of their comments and concerns. And so we're right now at that point where we're waiting for that feedback from from DOT.
And that's in a nutshell, huh? So you you also looked at the traffic impact on Stafford Drive or did you?
Yes.
There's a lot in that, sort of like a hundred, two hundred pages, I don't know what was in there.
Yeah.
And you looked at Stafford Drive, I think, in there, but it was a little confusing.
So we looked at three intersections. One is the existing intersection of Old Homestead Highway and Stafford Drive. The other two intersections are the proposed Stafford Driveways. The one on thirty-two is one on Stafford Drive.
That's the one I was talking about. So all of that traffic data that we have, did that come from the state that's already previously been measured? Or you set out, you're on your account out there and all that?
So we went out there and we counted the Old Homestead Highway and Stafford Drive intersection. Then we had to use New Hampshire DOT data to be able to increase those traffic counts to represent the peak month conditions and account for the pandemic. So we had to increase them by eighteen percent to be able to get to peak month conditions, and that's based on DOT data. And then we got to increase them by another six to seven percent to be able to get back to two thousand nineteen, pre-pandemic conditions. And that's also based on DOT data.
So you created a baseline, basically, right? Created baseline, the other intersections there, and then moved up.
Exactly.
Exactly.
I get it. Yeah, so kind of a strike for a bit everybody can agree upon, right? And that's what that spoken meeting was really meant for, not just anything, but following the appropriate methodology that everybody pretty support. Not necessarily finding, but the methodology.
So what did it look like? The amount you said it was under a hundred cars per hour, wouldn't it actually look like in Swansea?
So the development based on the I T E trip generation methodologies, we in the morning, we would have a total of twenty-two vehicles that would be entering the site and a total of sixty-three vehicles per hour exiting the site.
Per hour, and that's that's on the peak hours that come about.
Yeah, exactly. So if that thing, this weekday morning is between seven and nine, and that's a commuting time period when people are going to work or going to school. And during the evening is between four and six. Now, I believe in our previous meeting that we had, our preliminary meetings, that you already acquired about, you know, did you take a look at earlier than four to six?
We did, yes.
Yeah. Because and and we actually brought it up during the spoken meeting. We asked, you know, the school nearby, should we look at earlier? And all officials on the call said four to six is the busiest time period out there. Even with the school, regardless of the school, because even though the school might be peaking at two thirty, three o'clock, the other other people aren't coming in to work at that time. And those are just those adjustment factors that I was talking about, the peak month and the seasonal, I'm sorry, the pandemic adjustment, those factors taken into consideration, the weekday commuting time periods, and so that kind of involves something for.
So were those numbers out of the main entrance onto thirty-two or the entrance onto Stafford Drive or combination? Did you combine those to get the total of the traffic, I guess?
Yeah, the the traffic volume. What we what we ended up doing was that we took a look at, you know, like I said, we accounted Stafford Drive and Old Homestead Highway. And what we did was then we balanced that, you know, to be able to, we can wear our separate. So it wasn't like we needed to count where our driveways were because those drivers aren't here today and really haven't gone traffic or any traffic. So that's why you balance between your starting point, your your master intersection, the primary intersection, and then you just balance here the other intersections where the site drive ways are. So the site driveways were only analyzed under our bill condition. So we have our existing, we have our two thousand twenty-three no-built, we have a two thousand twenty-three built. So that's our comparison where it's nothing is there inside drivers of the two thousand twenty-three no-built. But we do have traffic volumes coming in and out of those new intersections in the future. And that's the same for the two thousand thirty-three conditions as well.
Just for the sake of the record, I want to make sure the record stays correctly.
Yes.
Sixty-three vehicles per hour is the estimated impact from the project at peak time?
So it's twenty-two, so this is during weekday morning peak hour. We have twenty-two entering vehicles per hour and we have sixty-three exiting.
Twenty-two entering?
Yes.
And sixty-three, and then vehicles per hour?
Vehicles per hour.
Okay, thank you.
During that time, all right?
That that's true, we did, that's the highest time period during the morning. So it's either seven to eight, seven thirty.
Oh, you said at peak time?
Just, well, this for the weekday morning, maybe the other number is the weekday evening.
This is weekends, you say?
Well, weekday morning.
Weekday mornings, okay.
So weekday evening, I'm going to give you those numbers.
But wait, wait, hold on.
Okay, no problem.
This is weekday morning?
Yes.
And for weekday evening?
Yes, so that would be the highest time period between the highest hours.
Would be what?
Would be fifty-six entering and thirty-eight exiting.
And thirty-eight exiting, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But as you can see, that even based on those numbers, that the highest amount of traffic that would be either entering or exiting would be morning exit. Now, it's the sixteen group, and that's why I was focusing on that.
And again, I'm still a little confused about as to which driver we're talking about, whether we're talking about a combination of both.
So it's a combination, so it's the whole site that we generated those numbers. Okay, so yeah, so then it's a matter of how do we distribute those those vehicles based on each drive ways. So and and that was kind of discussed with the DOT, too, to make sure that, you know, Chad had touched on it a little bit, that if we're going to have access only on Old Homestead Highway, then anybody that was returning right out here and destined to Route twelve, for example, would turn right out and right to on to Stafford and then be able to go over to Route twelve. And that was the whole purpose of why the town and the state were very interested in having the access on Stafford Drive as well. So that anybody that's on the property that wants to go to Route twelve is going to be able to use a Stafford Drive intersection. Anybody that's going to the south on thirty-two is going to be, whether it's the residential or the industrial, we're going to be using the driveway and coming into left to come southbound. Anybody that's going north, well, that that's kind of a judgment call, right? And what driveway are people going to be using? So what we did was we coordinated with DOT and to figure out what driveway do you think that people would use? People in the back here, so we did a split between people that would come south on that were destined to the site for the residential portion, return left onto Stafford and then coming to the site, or they would bypass Stafford and then turn left. So we did a split between the two, just so that we, you know, we were questioning, is anybody there? We sent people with both drivers.
That's right. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, you you mentioned looking at those intersections, but the, did you look into like the access to Route twelve?
No, that was not asked of us.
Okay, because I'm thinking sixty-three vehicles per hour, as you said, going north.
So sixty-three vehicles per hour will be exiting the site.
Yep.
Seventy percent of them would be going to the north on Old Homestead Highway.
Yes, and then when they hit, that's what I'm asking, when they hit Route twelve?
Yeah, so the thing is that even seventy percent of sixty-three is going to be less than a hundred vehicle per hour threshold. So that means that that's really kind of comparable within the daily fluctuation of traffic or weekly or the monthly fluctuation. Plus, on top of all that, is that I mentioned about how the annual growth rate in the area between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand nineteen was point one five percent. We had actually increased them by one percent compound annual growth rate over each of the years to be able to get to our future conditions. So even even based on those numbers, we're eighty-five, we're increasing our traffic by eighty-five percent above what had already been experienced prior to pandemic. So that, so even with all of these different factors that were included in here, we're still showing that we're not even going to have that kind of an impact, even to the north on thirty-two, when doesn't make much of a difference.
Clarify that, the state really wasn't interested in any extra traffic under twelve, just thirty-two, not state thirty-six.
Yeah, they, you know, based on, so what we had done was we had prepared some initial traffic work that we provided to the DOT, to the town and the regional planning commission. And as part of that, we, it was part of the spoken meeting process and provided some trip generation. And in based on that trip generation information, they said, wow, we really can't ask them to look for more than this immediate area. And they had asked us to take a look at would a left turn lane be warranted on thirty-two, go on to Stafford Drive? Or a right turn lane? But we ran all that, those analysis and then documented the traffic study and then all of it.
And there's, but they're still looking at that, right? Because they they could.
You're absolutely right, you're absolutely right. I don't want to, I don't want to put words in the states' mouths because they are still reviewing all that information, that's correct.
Any other questions from the board members? Any questions from the public about the traffic study?
What's the distance between Stafford and the new proposed driveway? I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
The distance between Stafford Drive and the new proposed driveway. I'm assuming on Route thirty-two, is that correct? The distance from the curve, yeah, on Route thirty-two.
It's about two hundred and ten feet.
And that would be as soon as people turning right on Stafford and turning right on the driveway, so site line.
Yeah, so we, as part of our traffic study, we did measure the site distances, too. And on, since Old Homestead Highway is a state roadway, we had to meet there four hundred feet of all season stage site distance, regardless of how fast people are traveling out there. But then we also looked at where Stafford Drive is a local roadway. We looked at it based on the closest speed one hundred twenty-five miles per hour, which people are not tracking, they're going faster than twenty-five. So we used the eighty percent idle speeds, which are in the thirty, thirty-five miles per hour, being a little bit faster, to be able to measure the site lines at that driver. And they need plenty of site distances. You know, Stafford Drive is a little bit windy as you go further to the east, but still people are going a little bit faster than twenty-five miles per hour. And now there's, and so sites of information are based on American Association State Highway Traffic Transportation Association's dashboard. So that's something that municipalities and states also look at, except on state roadway, they're saying on sixty-four hundred people also say that it's a site distance, which really isn't based on anything other than making sure you got length distance, even if it's.
Isn't that where the speed's next being is twenty-five, isn't that where it's just forty, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on Stafford Drive it's twenty-five.
Okay, but on Route thirty-two?
On thirty-two, south of Stafford Drive it's forty, north of thirty.
Right, that's that's exactly where it goes from there. Yeah, so it's just a little bit of a compute, I don't know if you're purposing anything to stay on lowering the speed limit or not.
I'm not tripping, I know.
Yeah. It's, it's, you know, where people start to speed up pretty bad, and it's exactly where it's coming to.
And and we did take a look at that as well, so I don't know if you saw it back in February or not. We had conferences out there that actually got the speeds and the volumes on both Old Homestead Highway and on Stafford Drive to find out how fast people are actually driving.
They didn't even take it.
You know, that's unfortunately, that's. You know, I could report some of the information now, like the municipality or the state want to do something about that, that's perfectly possible. I'm not a regular tour guide, but I know.
Now, I got a question about, so we said that for a hundred, hundred, a hundred, they don't care about basically? But are they, is there more detail on that, as far as like, okay, there's hundreds of people going out or less than a hundred people are not there? Where are they going to, where are they going to? There's not many uses to get from there and they're going to an intersection that has no lights to a highway that has no lights for a very long distance. And that's real, and all of us residents, it's already a pain to get out from there. So that's something that.
Yeah, I mean, so they're going to go to the roundabout, right? I mean, I live in the area, too. You're going to the roundabout because if you go to the end of the other road.
Lake Creek.
Unless you're going to Pop Bellows, you're not getting out, so, I mean, that's that's the reality.
That's seventy percent sixty-three more hard to try and get up at peak compared at peak hours.
Is that safe on that small?
But those are all, so we're talking about roads that are all under DOT jurisdiction, and they're the ones that told us, right, what work to do. So we we meet their criteria. And is there more traffic that's going to come from the site? Sure, when it falls under, you know, all of these thresholds and frankly, you know, the roundabout does handle the traffic, you know, better than that intersection did before for people coming, you know, from this direction going to Route twelve, right? You don't see the backup at all there. Unfortunately, you will see backup on occasion on Route twelve, because in the mornings especially, because there's too much volume coming through that roundabout, but it's actually good for people that will be coming from this side. So it's, I mean, just speaking to it from a real, real world application standpoint, from somebody who does drive that here. So, sorry, Jason, oh, it's so good.
So could you just give your name for the record, please?
Hannah Maynard.
And you're in the bottom.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
Hannah Maynard?
Hannah Maynard.
Oh, oh, Hannah, I thought you looked familiar.
And anybody else speaking from the public, just give your name for our record keeper, so we can keep them in a straight.
Ed Grant.
Ed Grant, he he spoke to.
Grant, and last name? Ed Grant, Ed Grant?
Yes.
And the first name is Ed?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the traffic engineers, or engineer?
This is not quite traffic, and I'm not sure if it's adjusted in other things, but I'm just thinking if it's lots of multi-families and such, is there a spot for like kids to be bicycling in the development or like?
Recreation.
Yeah.
Talk about recreation.
So, I mean, the the sites in general, you know, it's it's lightly, I mean, the John Flatley Company on occasion will gate the community. So there could, we could end up, you know, we'd have to get a little down the road, but there's been talk about potentially gating, you know, on the backside of the Stafford Drive intersection somewhere between here and the clubhouse. If there's too much, I mean, if there's traffic or too much traffic internally, they would likely do something like that.
Is there any sidewalks or any?
There's no sidewalks. There's no sidewalks, other than in front of the buildings for A B parking and going to, you know, going to the parking lots on the, on the sides of the buildings, there's sidewalks along this front side. But, you know, so biking would occur, you know, kind of in the, in the parking lot area. I can say that generally speaking, based on, I think the fist wound that kind of touches on this, we've done a number of these communities with them, it's one bedroom, studio and two bedroom apartments. They generally don't have many kids in their apartments. Normally that happens when you get into like a three bedroom scenario. And I don't know, Kevin, if you want to touch on some of the numbers and some of your other facilities.
This one. I just have a particular, just a little back study, projected ten school age children through a zone. We have a zone of American nature, it's two hundred and forty, so it's a little bit bigger than this. We have twelve, that's full, we have twelve, thirteen kids in that one. So the reason we do the one or two bedroom is to keep the impact lower on things like the school system, you know, the bus into the schools and so on. We typically will at some point. I'm not sure if we have on this plan, but we'll put a small playground for kids that are there. I think on this plan, we're talking about, we're, we're going to walk in. So most time, where our major catch ground will happen.
More importantly, I'm going to have ten school age children, they're going to be catching the bus on Route thirty two. It was like, is there any plans to put in, would we be able to put in a school bus stop? Which protected for the weather and stuff, but also so that people will know it's there because that's, children's safety is a big thing.
I don't think we're, we're not a person who wants a bus stop, but we're going to promise people at the school department, where we have that connection to Stafford Drive, we can actually put something on, on the roadway within the development, the bus to come in and get out.
Suggestion is that before you do something like that, call up first student, the school and the police department because they're going to want to tell you where to put them.
Yeah, absolutely. We can coordinate with them.
Yeah.
Kind of the same goes, and just to answer your question that you raised earlier was the post.
Yeah, just was wondering where that, post office usually decides that.
Right, they typically decide it in, in other communities. We've either been able to have that be at the entryway to both, to, to the individual buildings if they're willing to come through the site. Some postmasters are okay with that. Other times we'll just do, actually, in the clubhouse, we'll have a location so people can come in, park, go into the clubhouse, get their mail and leave. If they're not happy with that, you certainly have plenty of room along the access road to provide for a pull off in the post office blocks. If they, if they're not willing to do it, that's kind of the preference of the John Flaherty Company and how they would handle it. But ultimately that, that gets worked out by the postmaster.
I'd couple other, probably more important questions even. The Public Works Director is concerned about the heavy traffic that's going to be generated by those heavy construction vehicles of tearing up Stafford Drive. And now it's got scheduled into, what did you say, twenty twenty five to do the remilling and everything on that. And it's going to be a cost of thirty thousand, so he was wondering if we couldn't, if you would be amenable to actually sorting that cost after construction and get that milling done.
Well, I think that, I mean, we did see that the other, you know, the other day, we'd like to have a conversation with him about that. We don't want to commit to that as part of an approval, that's kind of, doesn't feel like the right way to handle a cost. I can tell you that the John Flaherty Company hasn't driven much on that road currently. And that road's in pretty poor condition, you know, right now.
Correct.
So, you know, they normally are very good neighbors and, you know, they don't have a problem helping, but I think there, you know, there's an appropriate path for that to happen, which would be, you know, a dialogue with, you know, with the road agent. The other thing that we were talking about is we would, we would make sure that all construction vehicles came out onto the highway to try to lessen, you know, the, the load on Stafford Drive since that is a concern of this. So.
I'm actually hearing you speak about a little bit if you'd like on those comments, now would be the appropriate time.
I mean, if.
Sure, we've raised the question, Joe, so I would say so.
Yeah, that's why I said I was reading, so yeah, so I have a few specific plans and obviously, like you said, there were the trucks coming in and out. A lot of large commercial vehicles are coming off of Route twelve. And right away when I looked at this last year, that road was deteriorating really bad. I was not in the budget to make some repairs. I came up with some money out of another account and we went in and did a bunch of millings in the area. Some of them were cross pipes, some of them were just areas that were deteriorated. More of a maintenance, to get a little bit more life out of the road. However, in doing that, created several more joints. Maybe I'm going to do a phenomenal job matching them, but there's probably an additional eight joints through there. It's not in the budget like I indicated to two thousand twenty five overlay. And I do have concerns about the additional traffic going across there and specifically a lot of tiny construction equipment coming in and out. And unfortunately, with the rise of cost of asphalt prices going up in other roads around town in need of repairs, that wasn't scheduled to two thousand twenty five. If the budget allowed, ideally I'd like to be overlaying it right now to prevent those joints and make the road in a lot better condition than it was then. That's why I bring that up and, and like I said, I'm somewhat new to this process. I didn't make previous considerations seeing that this project is definitely going to have an impact on that road, especially once the heavy construction equipment starts traveling back and forth. And I would be always discussing it further, but I, when I reviewed the plan, I figured that would bring to the board's attention.
Appreciate that. And yeah, I think it would be a good idea to have a discussion with the contractor and, and see before this whole process is finished to see what you guys come up with. So sooner than later, it would be good if you guys could make. Uh, yes. Pardon me?
We've got a problem on that.
Oh, yeah, you don't object to helping out with restoring the other one? Well, have a meeting with our road agent and, and come up with something. We will take that consideration. There is a play area that's in one of those plans. I remember seeing it when I looked it over. And would you just point that out and and point out the area, I guess there's a trailer on the whole perimeter of the property, I think. That's.
That's correct.
You like for recreation?
So we, we basically allocated a recreational area on, basically right across from the clubhouse. It is situated partially behind the first garage on the left. But it's a nice level area, so certainly a playground could be put in there or, you know, basketball hoop or something along those lines. Site entities are a big deal on the, you know, the John Flaherty Company projects. The, the other, you know, one of the site entities that's already been kind of incorporated is a, you know, a pretty long nature trail that'll essentially meander through the perimeter of the project. And we depicted that on the plans. It's, it's going to be, you know, it won't necessarily be a constructed trail, it'll be a selected trail. You know, so you might use some sawdust or something like that to, you know, level out some areas, but it's not going to be an invasive. We're not going to pave it or make it a big walk. It's a nature trail. A lot of times they put, you know, some reflectors on trees to help, you know, navigate through. One, it was a great question that was raised by staff was along this west, I was eastern portion of the site. We are up on top of, you know, kind of that tut slope and there was some concerns about, you know, the slope itself. And so what we agreed to do is install a, a a split rail, thank you, a split rail fence along that entire length, just to make sure people stay on, you know, on the trail and they don't end up, you know, trying to traverse the slope. And that will entirely around the perimeter. It does come through the recreational area as well and then ties into the clubhouse. So that's, you know, just another site entity that'll be incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Could you just put the drainage plan up on the screen if you can, or at least up on here, just to go through your drainage plan, you know, how you're going to do that with the excavation. You are going to put a bit of that forward there.
Sure, I can pull it up there too.
You would, I would like to, I can hardly see that there and I know these people can't see it at all.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll try to pull it up.
It's the drainage plan, yeah. And if anyone would like to come up and see the plans, we have a copy of them right here on the table here. You have a walking trails question? I didn't see, I wasn't, you just got to shout it out. So what is the question?
Well, my, my question was from Jay Ward. My question was, the walking trail crosses the wetland in several places according to the map. How is that, how is the impact on the wetlands going to be managed? We all know what it's like to walk in the woods through money, and how they can really show the paths of defeat and so on. So I'm just wondering if the bridges are going to be built or other structures or other things that are going to manage the land, just the path, intersection of the wetlands and crossing, or five foot plan? That was my question.
Okay. Could you just answer that and address that about that, the nature trail?
Yeah, so the, the majority of the wetlands on this site are, are what's called, are classified as the, it's a plough tree and forested wetland. So certainly in spring conditions, it's soft, right? You're going to, your, your feet are going to get wet for a period of time. But for the majority of the year, it's actually a pretty dry condition through the majority of it. If we find, you know, over time that there's an area that's, that's wet and is a problem, we have on other projects gotten a permit through the, the state for like a pedestrian bridge or something of that nature. That's actually a, it's a lower tier wetland permit because it's for recreational use. And that's something that the state actually kind of promotes. I don't know if promotes is the right word, but it's a lower tier permit. So if we find that there's a location or an area that is problematic and, you know, people have trouble traversing, we can do something like that. But in walking the site over the course of the last, you know, year, we believe that, that, that locations can be picked where they can be appropriately crossed without having any detrimental impacts on the wetlands. We don't anticipate that being, you know, being issued. So that's, if we're trying to be as, you know, as careful as possible picking a spot, it's not intended to be, you know, a bike path or, you know, something along, along that.
I'm sure, I just thought it, it wasn't clear to me whether it would be bridges or other things to cross over.
Yeah, looks like the answer is no.
Yeah.
Or not at this time anyway.
At this time, and, and of course, we, as a town, we won't necessarily go as time goes on unless we all, unless we go in there expecting.
Yeah.
Well, you will because the permitting path does involve the town even on a, you know, if we did get them permitted, it would.
What I meant was, if there's going to be a damage, people.
Or any need for a break, you mean, or something like that?
But like, my question.
Yeah, hi, I'm Lily Dowder. I abut, we abut this, right? The walking trail is the little box down on the bottom that sort of, or who goes that way?
Yep.
Yeah. So that goes like right behind our house. Are you all opposed to moving that sort of government directly behind our home? We have two small children now, not uncomfortable with walking trails for two hundred and eighty people, random people, they're supposed to be better. Trash, trash.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I, what I can tell you is the John Flaherty Company, they're very good about making sure their site's clean. And these trails, I mean, we have these trails and we have a hiking trail in Nashville. We have, what is it, seven hundred units there?
Eight hundred change.
And it's a two mile walking path and it gets used pretty infrequently, even with that number of people. But it's not like you see people out there all the time. With that said, ma'am, can you maybe help me out with where you are on the map?
Yeah, down, down here. What was the big screen?
What, yeah, this one, are you here?
Jack, can you point on the big screen so everyone can see? Just walking from the light, point it depends on the big screen.
This is, you did, okay. So this is, I should have brought a pointer, sorry. This is Ms. Gallagher's lot here. So we're actually over two hundred feet to your property.
I'm very familiar with.
To the trail.
That's not a lot of feet. Okay.
Is that wooded over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so two hundred feet through the woods. Yeah.
I still don't feel great about letting people walk in.
But they aren't going to be walking on your property though, right?
No.
Okay, so.
Not.
Yeah, probably not, yeah. If they are, yeah, that's a different story, but as long as they keep it to their property.
That's just one thing I have, but.
You have others?
Not a lot.
About that?
Tim Gozo, I was just wondering where are you, there's a whole brook that goes like through that entire property. Is that going to get left alone or are you going to have to grab it?
Yeah, the, we only let the crossing that we're proposing is that one crossing area, which is where that, that, that's where it comes through. So that's kind of how, it's a good question, that's how the, the trail, walking trail and the traffic kind of gets through that area.
Could you state your name for the?
Tim Gozo. I'm sorry, the last name?
It's out, Gozo.
Okay.
G A U T O P. G A U T O P.
Something we're done with that part there, if you could just go over, and if you could point on the big screen if you can, I don't know, about, just about the drainage part of the, your property.
Is there a way to get up there?
Uh, yeah, there, there, sorry. Or if you point in the shadow.
We are on stage now.
Yeah.
What, you paid extra for this?
Or if you fall off stage.
Do you fly them out or?
I was going to move, you kept that thing in. I think everyone can see. Can everybody see that? I need to see it. Okay.
All right, what's your question?
Uh, my question is just to, just to go over your general drainage. How are you going to do it and where it's all going? Because you had mentioned to us on this map here where it's going to go all the way, the bases and things, but. Sure. So we'll start, we'll start from the high side here. So in this plan, this plan looks horrible here, but so there's a series of closed drainage that runs through the parking in this location, through this backside. It conveys all the storm water on this side to this chamber system here. So this is a stormwater chamber system. It's got an isolated road, it infiltrates the runoff, treats the runoff, handles the quantitative and qualitative elements of the stormwater runoff.
And, and essentially that could fill right up with water, right, and store all that water. I looked at it on the plans because you had there and essentially you could store, it's underground. Several feet underground, isn't it?
That's correct.
So you could store a bunch of water and then slowly sink it in the.
That's correct.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So that is, you know, that really handles, and generally speaking, right, because I'm not following contours and giving you breakdown, but there's closed drainage, all ties together, comes over here. This is sized, I mean, just so you know, from the state's end, we do the two, ten, twenty five, fifty and check the hundred year storm. So it goes right up through the, you know, the design storm. Again, I think the local regulation is twenty five meters and no check to anything. So it's overdesigned and overdesigned to a point, when we do infiltration like this, the soils here are very sandy. It's a coarse sand, it has a very fast infiltration here. The state only allows us to model exfiltration, the flow of water into the ground at a radius of ten inches per hour, right? So that's how you start to size the system. That's why these systems get very big. Then they have a supply of factor of safety too. So when you, when you look at these systems, we actually have a, there's a small chamber system behind the building too, that takes some of the roof runoff. We have to treat the roof runoff from these buildings because it's considered a commercial use. Any multifamily over three units is considered a commercial use. So we have to treat the roof runoff too. So everything gets captured, gets treated and, you know, you know, handled before it gets discharged at all into a weather. These systems do have an overflow component, like if we got a. These systems do have an overflow component, like if we've got a very large storm or, you know, back to back large storms, they will discharge it through an overflow into the jurisdictional wetland area. But, but at that point, you're already reducing the rate of runoff. And, and so that's why you have a reduction in all storms because of those factors of safety. We're infiltrating so much or we're storing so much, like you said, through these systems. Through this portion of the site here, we're taking, you know, this area and we're basically routing it down to this basin here. This is a surface basin, it's a, what they call gravel wetland. And it basically, it's a manmade melt wetland for stormwater treatment. They make us line this because they don't want any, any interaction with groundwater and stormwater. So they want you to treat it before you can discharge, and that's why they require you to line that. Lining those types of basins is something that the state adopt, has been enforced over the last, you know, two to three years.
Where's it go? If that's line, where does that water go?
So, so what happens here, a gravel wetland basically has a network of piping. So you're, you're holding the water, you're, you're retaining it and then you're metering it out. So this has an outfall that goes this way into a treatment swale and then discharges into a wetland that ultimately runs to Old Homestead Highway. So it has an outlet, but it slows the water down, that's why this is, this is sized. So you gotta capture all the water, you hold it, you meter it out and you treat it. And the velocity through this swale, this swale actually has to have a residence time for stormwater, 10 minutes. So think about that, like we're really slowing the water down through that swale.
So when you say treatment, are you talking about holding time or are you talking about sedimentation? Or both?
Both.
Both, so that's a treatment area, you get sedimentation treatment in that pond and area?
Correct, so this pond has what's called a four bay, which is kind of the first cell is for settling. And so the, the design component here is, is that the stormwater, you know, goes through that drainage system and that first chamber is where you're gonna get most of your sediment settling out. And then when you, then it'll discharge from here into this larger basin, which is really gonna hold it and slow the water down so that it's metered offsite at the same or slower rate than existing flows. That's what you have, we have to do. And then from here, it's discharged into a vegetated treatment swale. And that treatment swale is, you know, basically taking nutrient load out of, out of the stormwater. So when I say treatment, there's qualitative and quantitative. Qualitative is it's taking sediment, nutrients, stuff like that out of the stormwater. Quantitative is it's slowing it down, it's holding it back, it's matching or less than existing conditions. And that's, that's a, you know, that's a pretty complex exercise when you, you know, you start to develop sites, you know, and have a lot of impervious area. You gotta really capture it, you know, so you're, you're using a lot of different features, you know, curbing. All the catch basins in this project that capture the stormwater runoff will have oil water hoods, oil debris hoods. So if there's ever any issues in the parking area, you know, the, the catch basin will separate the oil from the stormwater, the debris from the stormwater. So all of these things work together, you know, in, to accomplish, you know, greater good. But there is a stormwater management, stormwater inspection report and that's part of the state permitting. You have to do routine inspections, you gotta document that and have it, have it available. And, and the Flatland Company does this on a number of sites, so they have a very good management team. They obviously, you know, if you don't take care of something, it's no different than anything else. It'll have a life span and then it'll cost you money, you know, and, and so it's important and they take it very seriously to, you know, to keep up with this stuff. But that's all part of the state stormwater permit. So moving down, you know, kind of down the road, this whole area here has a chamber system here that'll, that'll capture all, or all the stormwater runoff will be routed to this chamber system there. And then, you know, this area here, we have a swale, you know, along the access road that conveys the stormwater in this direction. We have a swale along the access road here that has a pole, conveys everything over this direction. And ultimately, this is an infiltration basin, which is a shallow, it's shallow because we don't have a large distance to the seasonal water, the seasonal high water table. So we had to make that shallow, and we tried to lay this slopes out so it just kind of looked like a, you know, kind of a maintained lawn. So that'll be a mode infiltration basin there.
Are you gonna have to lower the elevation where that mode infiltration basin is? Because it's kind of pine out of the house, so you're gonna lower that down to it?
Yeah, that's correct, it's about, this will be about four feet below the highway, you know, kind of transition into a, a little bit of a bowl.
And that doesn't get into your high water or liner?
And then this lower side here will be a stormwater management area as well. And that'll be primarily for runoff coming off parking area. This will likely, or this, I shouldn't say likely, this is kind of more of a, like a bio retention or rain garden area, just because it's got good soils. But it's gonna be, you know, shallow, there's some vegetation and that'll, that'll provide treatment for this improved area as well.
So is there treatment for your infiltration bases, you know, to remove the sediment before it gets into those?
Yes.
That's, that's how that.
So it's, it happens in a couple of different fashions. Great questions. The catch basins are what's called deep subcatch basins, so each catch basin has a something that's oversized. And then we put those hoods on. And the, what, what happens is, is that you get a lot of sediment settling out in the catch basins. But on top of that, we have what's called an isolator row in each chamber system. So you have, you have basically a manhole on either side of the system and the water is pushed through the isolator row first. That isolator row is a fabric lined chamber system, so you can get in there and clean sediment out. It's, it's isolated, which is why they call it an isolated row. So if sediment ever got into this basin, if those catch basins, you know, for whatever reason are not functioning well, you know, or you get, you know, really, you know, somebody dumped sand, there's, you know, two upstanding, you can get a little bit of a load in those areas. Part of the, the routine maintenance or the annual maintenance is to look in those systems and, and clean them out. And normally what they do if there's an issue there is they jet the sediment out into the drain manhole on either side of the system.
Oh, and then vacuum out, I see, you wash it out and then back.
Then you vacuum those out. But that is, that, what that does is it protects the rest of the system. So you're guaranteed not to have a situation where the whole system starts to get sediment in it, eventually compromises the infiltration or, you know, exfiltration rates. So it's, it's a, you know, there's kind of belts and suspenders along the way. There's the, there's the state's infiltration rate, which is one thing, it's the factor of safety. And then there's the isolator row, and then there's the, you know, the deep subcatch basins. And then, you know, you might have, you know, some four bays or, you know, conveyance swales that will remove some sediment in areas too. For example, you know, some of the areas on your perimeter here, these are conveyance swales. So they're like a vegetated treatment swale. But there's a number of best management practices that all work together to, to meet the state criteria.
Interesting.
That's why I said I'm giving, initially I gave a very broad overview, but it's a, it's a pretty complex system.
Any questions on the, the drainage system? We chase a lot of people away here, any questions on, on what we was just speaking about? No? Is it getting too late or I don't even know what time it is? Eight twenty, could, could you go over the, the floor plan, just a little general overview on, on that? The buildings there?
Sure. Which one would you like to see?
Um, just a general floor plan of, of one of the buildings there, just showing the layout of the apartment and stuff. It doesn't have to be, I think all, all floors are the same, aren't they? On all the buildings? Just be showing now where elevator is, what stairways are, things like that.
Yeah, is there storage for each unit somewhere?
There is not storage for each unit, but we have the storage right across the road. The bench is like that's under construction right now.
So, so in total on these, there's, as Chad said, there's 20 one bedrooms, four studios and 28 two bedroom. The studio is the third unit over, it's, go, go up to the left, right there. So that's a studio unit there.
And it makes it a studio because of?
It doesn't have a, it doesn't have a prescribed bedroom. So they'll have a, you know, either something against the wall that can get pulled down or however.
Square footage.
I think the studio is around, I think it's just under 500 square, right around 500, just under a stall. Yeah, so the, the two bedrooms range from 1,080 to 1,130 square feet.
And those are the end unit, but yeah.
Yeah, the end units are the bigger, the bigger units.
And those are two bedrooms, those end units are two bedrooms?
So the end units.
It looks almost like a three bedroom over there, it's a nice apartment over there.
Yeah, you got a bedroom here, a bedroom here, this looks like the master.
How many two bedrooms have there?
Per building there are 28 two bedroom.
And then the rest, aside from the studios, so you have single bedrooms after that?
Right, there's one, bunch of one bedroom studios. One bedroom is very inside from just under 1,000 square feet down to maybe 600 square feet. Studios are around 500 square feet. And the, the two bedrooms are, I think the corner units are just over 1,100. And some of the interior ones are 1,080.
This is a two bedroom unit right here as well. It's an interior one, you have a bedroom on either side with the living room here, kitchen.
Mine is, what about an island, an island depicted there, and then what they are, that little gray, yeah, that island for kitchen. So they have two bathrooms apiece, so the bedroom, uh, two bedroom apartments?
Yeah, two bedrooms have, have two bathrooms.
This is not workforce size, but upper.
My, my, my career. Yeah. We, you know, a lot of these apartments that we build, you know, use the ones in Merrimack or in Nashville, I guess. So we could probably get 10% or more of what we're charging for rents. But our goal is to have people that wanna come there, that wanna live there, they're long-term residents. We've got a lady in our Nashville development that's been there since, oh, 10, 12 years ago. But I just met with her strangely the other day, so she loves it, she's my girl anywhere. And that's why, you know, we're trying to get some amenities on the site where we can, whether it's a walking trail, saltwater pool, the clubhouse is beautiful, it's got a pool table, other games you could play in there, it's got a movie studio in there, eight to 10 foot.
We got a movie set.
Our leasing office is in the clubhouse. Our maintenance guy typically live on or very near the site. It's very hand on. We have a if somebody needs to speak with one of the the site coordinators in the leasing office and it's after hours, usually they're there between seven or eight AM and five or six PM weekend, sometimes a little bit longer or whatever. But there's also a number, if nobody's there, there's a number that goes to an answering service that gets in touch with whether it's a maintenance guy, whoever it needs to be, that we, we are, we can be accessed 24 hours.
Now, if somebody's non-smoking?
Non-smoking, they're non-smoking.
Voice your insurance costs a whole much.
So it does.
So it looks like what you have a main hallway down the center there. Does that, every building is the same, right? So you have the main hall down the center, and you have two stairwells and those?
Yeah, there's stairwell here, stairwell here, the hallway over here.
And are there utility rooms on those floors or for, I guess? I don't know, I guess you have utilities on the roof, you mentioned heat pumps on the roof, correct?
Isn't this like a?
So on the first floor, that's obviously, that's the best of fuel and where we'd like to put the mail area. The exit you see above it is the elevator. The best of fuel, anybody can walk into, the second door, which is coming out from the X there, that you have a key card to get in, so it's not, you know, the mailman can get into whoever's mail, but he can't get into the building. So that's a thing of security feature that we like to have.
How about the stairways, are they just one-way doors, you mean? You can't open up the stairway doors on the outside?
You can, you can open them both ways.
On the outside?
So you could.
With the key card?
With it, with the key.
Oh, key card, okay.
So on the first floor, you can see on the right, that's a, that's a water room and an electric room.
Where, point that out, we're.
Right. Yep, you got it right there. On the upper floors, those are stored areas.
Okay, so.
So, so the people can get some storage, storage room in there, in the building.
So again, you utilities, like the one we were gonna hook up, is that what we're gonna be in there?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got this set up, the other water meters would be in there, the electric meters would be in the other room. And the way we've got the setup now is the gas meters are actually on the right-hand side also.
So is there an electric meter for each apartment? Is that how it is?
Yeah, so there's electric meter for each apartment, plus there's a house meter, house meters for, you know, the hallways, the lobby, elevators.
Does each floor have its own room with electric meters in it? Or is just that one room gonna take care of all the meters? It takes care of all the meters in the entire building?
Yeah. As the floors go up, those are, those are the, those are the storage, storage rooms.
And what's at the other end, that small little area to the left, the way at the other end? The buildings, I don't, well, that's part of that apartment though.
Yeah, that's one of those.
So are there, that's a ground floor you're showing on there, right? So is there outside, let's see, I guess there is outside access to those apartments from the, from the ground? Those apartments have their own doors, can they go outside?
So on the ground floor, so everybody's got a deck out here except for the studios. The studios, we weren't able to fit a deck in. But all of the other units have their own deck, I think it's either 10 by 10 or 10 by 12, including the first floor, first floor they walk out of.
That's a little deck out there.
Yep, they walk out, there's sliders in the back and, and they can hang out on their deck. If they wanna be separated, we've, we've got something that we can, you know, put on like a lattice type wall up if, if, you know, somebody so chooses. I don't think anybody's requested it so far.
And so there's, there's no crawl space or no cellar underneath any of these, right?
Slab, yeah.
Interesting, okay, any questions? No, no questions, okay, that's.
Did you, Joe, uh, public director, did you come to some kind of agreement?
I'm excited to give you a call.
Oh, give him a call.
I get my card.
Should we make that kind of a condition or not?
Let's see what they come up with, because yeah, it's a concern of the town and they're willing to work with the town, so we'll see what they come up with. And we'll, we have to revamp our condition, we're discussing that in our site plan regulations anyway, so we'll see how we address that. At this point, what's the board, do you wanna break until the next meeting? Continue the public hearing next meeting and because we haven't gotten to the industrial building yet or the clubhouse yet. So, and this is good, sticking to this part of here, there's a lot of information here that. So, and this is good, sticking to this part of here, there's a lot of information here that we see, so.
So we we're, our our goal is, we're hoping to, hoping to have the hearing closed and voted on if possible, in one meeting. So we're kind of, we're trying to push to for the close. Actually, the owners are trying to push for the closing. Uh we just gave them a month's extension, you know, uh hoping that we can get approval today and go through the appeal period. I'm like that that way. Um and if it wasn't for the owners really wanting to get this uh, get this moving, I I would typically just agree. Um but if Ford has it to to push, just to talk about the clubhouse and the flex building, that'd be great, but obviously it's it's your call.
Yep, it's right, it's a board decision if we wanna do that. The the owner, I mean, yeah, the owner, it's only two weeks we're talking about until our next meeting.
I don't disagree with you.
You know, so and there's a lot of information here that I think maybe some of the board members, including myself, haven't read the entire packet of this thing yet. So there's a lot that that.
But it would be interesting to know what you and Joe come up with for, and so we can put it in unconditional, try to agree with it.
So is that what the board wants to do?
I would suggest we do.
Continue the hearing until our next meeting?
I agree, Scott, this is still a lot more information to me.
So is there anything else that we'd like the applicant to bring with them to the next meeting that we think that they've left out?
The flex building.
Well, yeah, that's part of the project. We have to review that and we're gonna review the clubhouse as well.
Yeah, and then maybe what he proposes for the bus stop for the children.
Yeah, okay, right.
What are you gonna do? He's smiling, he knows me.
Well, a lot.
A lot. So you will be getting a permit from it?
Okay, yeah, there'll be a permit. I mean, I I don't know the exact number, but it's a, you know, a pretty good area in here. It's mature forest, so you're definitely gonna be over the board, but uh for the moment.
Okay, then a motion is in order to continue this public hearing until our next meeting.
So. Second.
And that motion was made by Mike, Michael, and seconded by Richard. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, okay, we will reconvene this public hearing at our next meeting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few other items on the agenda here. For the record, Bill Hulker is back and I think Lily is gone. She left?
Yeah, she left.
So we have the master plan updates on there and the conservation commission had some input on that. And Jane is back on the, on the board as well. Jane is back too.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But were they, were they gonna come in and discuss that with us, sir, or no?
No.
You just added in the thing.
I, yeah, I just added their edits for you guys to see and review. I think they are still discussing.
Timeline.
Yeah, the action items from the priorities, but they haven't submitted anything yet for you.
Okay, let's table that for the next meeting as well, because I haven't read through the entire thing yet either. I'll read through that as well and anyone else will read through that. We're gonna table the uh master plan updates until our next meeting as well. Everybody can read them over again. And there, again, they're just correcting, or not corrections, they're just additions of the conservation. And that brings us to our discussion, site plan re- right, review regulations. And we're discussing um, well, there's a legal letter we have in here. And it turns out Beverly was correct. We're gonna have to hire Beverly as our legal person there, because her interpretation of what we're.
Make sure you write that in the notes.
Was correct, yeah. That was correct. Well, it was, it was right spot on. And when I got, you know, I was looking after the the meeting we had there, I was reading it over the RSA's and stuff like that. And I thought, you know, that's, that sounds correct. And then our legal attorney came in the same way, it was correct that way. Which means a conditional approval, what we're talking about. And there's a difference between uh an administrative condition and a condition for, as the example in in the uh, our attorney gave was for vegetation. So so that means that any of the conditions we put on that are uh waiting for another permit or another agency or another anything that the planning board does not have control over, that can be administrative uh condition that can be met. And the plat can become finally approved without another public hearing, is what we're we're looking at here. Other conditions as far as uh, I don't know, difference in types of plantings or differences in like the roof structure on that other building, you know, the other thing we had coming up there, things like that are conditions that the board has come up with and decided on their own that that should be so. So those, according to the RSA's, cannot be uh finalized, or the site plan can't be finalized until there's another public hearing on those conditions. So what we probably ought to do going forward, and when we revise our our site plan regulations, is that if we have conditions like that, like a stone wall or something has to be higher or lower or whatever, that it get put on the plat written right on the plat, and then the plat is approved, and then they wouldn't have to come back for another public hearing. It would be on the plat and they'd have to do it because that's part of plat there. Otherwise, if it is not put on there, they'd have to come back for, it's not really a compliance hearing, but it's a a public hearing to to satisfy the board that that condition was met. So we can think about that, you know, inside that tonight or anything like that, but that's a way I think we could do that.
Scott, if you put, if you put it on the plat, who's, do you review it as the chairman of the and sign off on it? So you verify the fact that that has been taken care of?
If it's on the plat, then we don't vote to approve it until it's on the plat. The planning board does not take a vote until it's there. Yeah, we can say it should be on the plat, but they'll probably have to come back for another meeting uh with it on the plat, unless it's already on the plat. You follow what I mean?
No, okay, so what you're, what you're proposing is, in the future, rather than um approval with conditions and having to come back, is that you will put those conditions on the plat that's being submitted? And then you, you're the one that reviews those to verify that they've been done and then you sign off on it? Is that what you're proposing?
Not really. What I'm proposing is that when we approve the conditions, we can have the conditions being the administrative ones that are beyond our control, like a permit or state permits, yeah, those types of things. Uh that's, that's a condition. And that condition, when it's met by whatever board it is within the year, the plat automatically becomes finalized at that point when all those conditions were met, all those permits were signed and brought in by the state. And then that's when their, when your uh major construction starts there. But what I'm saying is about the other conditions, the ones that we we might call in for difference.
Like the roof line or requirements.
Lines, things like that. Those would be, I'm saying, should be put on the plat first, so they actually, they're conditions, but they're on the plat, so they aren't conditions that require a public hearing again for the the applicant to come to uh to satisfy the board. However, it may end up being that way because those things, they wouldn't ordinarily be on the plat unless the applicant did it beforehand. Uh so they'd have to be put on a plat and we'd continue the public hearing till the next meeting. And then when they brought back the information and the planning board was satisfied that, yeah, the plat is the way they want it with those conditions that they had asked for on the on the design on the plat, then the planning board takes a vote, yeah, to approve it or not, is what I'm, is what I'm saying. You don't know about that?
When I think that, I think it's a silly cartoon. Alexa, I don't know about that. I have to, I have to read that. I'm not too sure. I'm not just gonna take it on your verbal expression.
Of course you are, come on.
I'm too hungry and tired.
Because what we haven't been doing is we haven't been bringing them back for another public hearing, and that's stated in the RSA's. Okay, so June, I mean, Jane is hungry. So unless there's other, any other business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
What did we decide just then?
We were just discussing, we haven't decided anything, because this is ongoing discussion about our site plan review regulations when we revamp them. So we're, we're trying to just think of of things that are beyond there and try and straighten out that uh that condition, the conditional approval or approval with conditions. They mean two different things, even though they sound exactly the same.
So not really.
Yeah, not really. Now that we've discussed it, not really. But but I mean, prior to, it was about the same.
I think, I kind of think he's saying the same thing I said. I I think I would have to dig more deeply.
And we're gonna do that, yeah. Let's do that.
And that's why I made a motion to adjourn, because I don't think we're ready to say, yeah.
No, we aren't. No, we haven't decided anything yet. So we need a second for that motion.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, and we're officially adjourned. Plenty of stuff to think about. Let's read, if we can, the uh update.